So I was just calling because we were um.
You're fine.
We were start on, we were just making sure the meeting wasn't happening. If we didn't have three, then it wasn't gonna happen.
Oh, I it's right by Emily, I think.
Better right.
Oh, the mayor moved in.
Is it gavel, right?
Gavel, yeah.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Alright, we're official now.
You might just speak loud. We've been having a lot of trouble.
Okay. On the order of the regular meeting of the Recreation Park Commission Tuesday, December third, two thousand twenty twenty four. That's not really roll copies.
Joe Harris.
Here.
Enrique Ortiz. Emily Dryling.
Here.
Michael Jimenez.
Here.
Or no phone to borrow.
Very good. That's what I number two, for the leaders, please stand, please. Position, please. Many participation form, I'm not seeing anybody here, so going into consent calendar, I remember four. Since I'm an end representative for the commission and the crew without an inspection as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. Should a member of the Recreation and Parks Commission wish to discuss their disapproving item, it must be dropped from the Lincoln motion of approval and considered as a separate item. Item A, approve the minutes to the Recreation Park Commission regular meeting on November fifth, two thousand twenty four. We're looking for our motion.
Motion.
No second.
Motion second all those in favor. Think the five percent.
Hi.
Did you get all that?
Yes, sir.
Let's go down to the important business. What is it do with the recent updates?
Hello. Could you ask me, as I, hi, hello, are you guys break? Hope it was very, very well. Our big focus for this report was our Thanksgiving break. Uh, we were open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We were open from seven thirty to five thirty P M. We held eighty four kids and average daily attendance for that week. And unfortunately, we had to cancel some field trips because of the rain, but we were able to make it a one to the Discovery Museum. We ran Alpha Lead, uh, that's a program that teaches kids how to work as a team. We ran some of our photography programming. We also ran some of our robotics programming, um, our art programming, drama matters. So it was, there was a lot of going on. Um, the school, we have a com- uh, like a connection with the school, so they provide all the kids, they pay for all of them, and we run their programming for them. It looks like we're gonna be doing that for winter break as well, which is a great opportunity because it's free. For any like Guadalupe kid in the district, so it's completely free from kindergarten all the way to eighth grade, which is really awesome. And then we have our basketball practices starting, they started this month. Um, games officially start this month as well, so that's very exciting. Games are gonna be held. At Ron on Saturdays, and it's usually just the little ones that get to play there because of the roof. Because if you try to shoot a three from a corner and you're pretty tall, you're gonna, you're gonna hit the roof. So our little ones are gonna be playing there. Yeah.
That's good.
You guys have any questions? Sorry, can you hear me? Yeah.
And when you said where the location would be meant, run as to be honest.
Yeah, run as to be honest. Uh, the older kids get to play at Lakeview, and in this year, actually, Pioneer is letting them use our gym, so all the kids. There's a lot of Guadalupe teams, I think there's ten, ten Guadalupe teams, so.
And what, are you a coach for one?
I'm coaching a team.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, after he was here last month, I signed up to coach. Um, they needed a coach, so I'm coaching, uh, third and fourth grade girls. Yeah. Aw, nice.
Good division.
Yeah, it's fun.
Did you get all your coaches?
We did. We did. We got all of our coaches that I know of. We got all of our coaches. It's funny because. One coach, she works at Chevron Tara, and then she also just heard and she like, was like, oh, yeah, if you guys are looking for a coach. And then this, I don't know if you guys know Christina.
Yeah.
She's coaching three teams, which her team's practice today, like, sort of, her youngest Chris is there, her youngest boy. And he's like, yeah, I'm here from six all the way to eight today. And I'm like, ah, I'm sorry. But yeah, like, it's great. Community really stepped up.
Yeah, we did in the past. I had a practice for the kindergarten division, had ten teams, and they were doing cooking well. After this practice, we'll have another coaches.
Yeah.
Parents come in, we're gonna find out, not pause, and then you know, these kids will have a coach.
Yeah, um, something else that really cool happened this month is we partnered up with the Dune Center here in Guadalupe. So they go over and they teach the kids about the dunes and like the type of animals and the environment, and then just do like some science programming with them. It's really cool. Um, this happened last week, so I had to turn in this report before, so I got some cool pictures that for next report, it could be awesome.
I think one of the kids told me about the, been doing the Dune Center.
Yeah, they do the Dune Center, yeah. Pretty cool with Joey. She's, she's awesome. The kids loved her and it was awesome.
Very good.
What sport comes after basketball?
It's volleyball.
Oh, nice.
But I know last year there wasn't that many enrolled, so hopefully this year. Yeah, it's volleyball.
What, when does volleyball start?
I think so, January is the last month basketball.
Okay.
And then I think volleyball kicks up in March, but they don't really practice here.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they could join a team here like for the Guadalupe team, but I don't think they practice here. They practice in Centermeat, because most games are in Centermeat.
I might sign up to coach. I am. It's my lull before, hold on, start. Oh, one last question. When's the deadline for parents to sign up for, um, the winter break?
There, so the school district has a new meeting deadline, where I think they're gonna extend it until the twentieth, which is the Friday before Thanksgiving, I mean, winter break.
Oh.
So the twentieth, there is flyers, all the parents got a parent square.
Oh, nice.
So all the parent, if you're enrolled in Guadalupe, you should have gotten a parent square about it. So, yeah.
Awesome, awesome. You guys had such great attendance.
Yeah, it was really fun this Thanksgiving. There was a lot of new kids, which I was shocked because I thought a lot of like returners were gonna come, but a lot of like. Newer kids came in as well, because Thanksgiving break, like years passed. I worked for the Boys and Girls Club for nine years.
Yeah.
And Thanksgiving break is usually the lowest attended, where it's like thirty, forty kids, and this year was eighty, which was awesome.
Cool. Great work. Getting the word out.
My daughter was there.
Yeah, too. It was awesome. Yeah, I heard people they want to go to, to the field trip.
Yeah, they had a field trip every museum and to the Centermeat. They loved it. She had a great time every day.
Yeah, that was probably my favorite group, the kindergarteners and the first graders.
Thank you. Anybody else any comments or question? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Very nice.
Uh, I didn't remember six, I've called first Friday to the grant update.
So I submitted the last required document for the whale grant, uh, that was turned in on. I think it was November eleventh. Uh, we had one last document from Todd we needed to submit, so that is the last thing we had to have that. Application complete, and so just another one in the holding pattern, waiting for review, uh, which will come after the first of the year. And Barbara from the T P A organization will keep us posted on where we're at, but that would be twenty thousand dollars. And then we still have the youth community access grant pending, and then also the urban greeting grant pending, waiting for state funding to release. Nothing new this month, but Todd usually gets the grant memo about this time every month, and then he'll send it over to me, and I'll take a look at what we have available. And then start working with T P A to get our next grants submitted. Fingers crossed, we get some whale money.
Let us pray.
Left, right.
Thank you. Any questions that are coming, sir? If, uh, we're gonna G con meeting at eight.
Oh, they don't meet till the second Friday of the month, so nothing until December thirteenth of the fourth. And that was the first one. Um, we're gonna report.
This is, this is your report about your first meeting, and next month will be your report about your second meeting. It's, it's kind of off.
Well, I attended the meeting, and, and there were, uh, I guess there were, let's see, one, two. Three, three, I made four representatives, different organizations. Um, and evidently, when they first started, it was, gee, I, I can't remember exactly whether, a lot of organizations. That were part of the G con and their meeting, then I think it, whether it was COVID or post-COVID, whatever happened, they just never came back. So one of the ideas is trying to rebuild it and trying to get more, uh, more participation. Um, so that's kind of like the focus right now, and so that's I hope to, I'm sure that's our focus too, to find out, you know.
And what, uh, did you find out what the goal of the group is?
They have a mission statement. If you go on their website, uh, you know, Guadalupe Coalition.
But like, what's the gist of it? Just to get together and talk about?
I think to share information and, you know, start promoting things that are in the community.
And it's just nonprofits.
Well, I, well, I'm not, I'm, I'm not representing nonprofits, so I'm just going as.
No, but I mean, when you went, it was only nonprofit representative.
Dune Center was there. Garrett was there, uh, while he launched so many nonprofits. And then there was a, a young lady, and I can't remember exactly where she was from. Um, yeah, but, yeah, they're nonprofits.
Gotcha.
But I'm kind of representing parts of rec, if it was issue, just find out what's going on in the community, I think we're going to. Yeah, so next meeting, I should have more information, hopefully, in terms of what they're doing, but yeah, you, I invite anybody, it's a second. Second Tuesday, or excuse me, second Friday of every month, and, uh, it is held at the, uh. Set place call where the social club. Yeah.
What time is it at?
Oh.
Approximately. Okay, that's nice.
I'm sorry, I have that on Friday, but the longer you're there, that's good.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, you said it was the second Friday of every month.
Yeah, which is the thirteenth.
Uh, could be something.
Yeah, I'd never heard of them before.
Yeah, no.
First, you know, not a problem, but why they have low attendance. Uh, I feel pretty plugged into stuff around here and nobody, I'd never heard of it.
That makes two of us. I was like, what? They do what?
Yeah, what's going on?
I'm shocked that he had to answer, that I, when you, anything about the nonprofit, oh, we meet every. You do? Really? And, and the, the group, there's, really?
Yeah, unfortunately, like I said, they, uh.
It's pretty, yeah.
Really, though, the attendance, receiving and change that. Yeah, and I think it's more like a round table where people go together, share their ideas, share what's going on, and it's great, you know, like, grant writing, when you're doing something, you get a lot of letters and. Support.
Yeah.
And even certain activities, you don't have to like pile on the same base.
Sure, we collaborate with each other, yeah.
You might, you know, um, if they ever start talking grant stuff, if you don't mind doing a little plug that we've just been actively pursuing, and. If there's ones that they may see that might be a good fit for the city, let me know.
Absolutely. All right, doing better already.
Yeah. On a call.
Very good. Item number, I wrote eight, Zumba.
Alright, I'm just gonna speak loud because it's not working. Um, Zumba's doing well. Uh, we're having it twice a week, with the exception of this month, you're gonna see it's a lot. A lot of Mondays, because we're hitting holidays, and today with the memorial service, we canceled it, and. So there's a little back and forth, so this month will be a little funky, uh, but next month, uh, we already have the schedule for. January and February, I believe, and we're back on track for Mondays. Mondays and Tuesdays in January, and I think then we switch to Mondays and Fridays based on what the school district can do, so. Um. School district schedule is what kind of indicates what we're doing with Zumba, but, um, we've been getting a, uh, attendance of twenty-two to twenty-three people per average. Um, some nights have been as high as, I think, twenty-six was the highest and the lowest was eighteen. Um, but I averaged out November, um, because we finished up November and it was twenty-two, twenty-three per night, so pretty awesome. I've been in there a couple times and it's. There's a lot of people in there moving and shaking, and they're having a good time, so that's awesome. Monica's great, um, so we're just gonna keep going with it as long as the people want it.
Heard a lot of really positive feedback from people in the community. I haven't had a chance to go yet, but, uh, a lot of people have like invited and talked about it, or posted and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, when I post about it, I get lots of yays, so that's cool. Yeah, not all my events, yeah, not my, all my events get that much attention, but Zumba, man, I post it and I immediately get hearts and yays, and I'll be there, so. That's kind of cool that they're so excited about it.
Very good. No questions or anything about Zumba? Now that we go to item number nine, pickleball.
So pickleball has been a little bit of a standstill lately, um, got all the equipment in, got it set up. Uh, I think it was the end of October, uh, when I got all that squared away. Um, I did a trial game with, um, Todd and Juana and Isaiah from the senior center, and we, we played a game with the equipment to see how that was all gonna work. Especially the, the lines on the ground, those temporary lines. I'm not a fan of the temporary lines, they move a lot. Um, I did buy some tape to tape them down, and it has just been so hectic. And I need four people to play it so that we can test it, and people have been kind of busy this last month, so. Uh, my goal is to set it up this weekend, try to test it out, taping the temporary lines down in strategic spots, you know? If that doesn't work, then, um, we just need to go straight tape on the floor, which is fine. Um, but we can't do that in auditorium, because I would have to rip it up every day, uh, for the school district to use it for their games twice a week. Um, and I don't want to do that because it's a lot of work to tape it out. Um. And, and it really takes two people, just so that you can have one person at one end, and you keep your line straight and all that stuff. Um, all equipment is great, though, and our little nets on wheels, and it's lightweight, and it's lovely, and we had a great time, we were laughing and. Just sweating up a storm, so it was fun. We just gotta get that last part figured out. So my goal is to start, uh, having drop-ins in January. Um, because this month is just weird with the city, city closes for the holidays, and so we really only have the first three weeks.
Yeah.
And we're jamming everything into the first three weeks, um, so. I figured it's nice to start January fresh and do the whole month, and we'll just have set days, just like Joe has, and, and set hours. So.
Well, if you need another player, I have no skill, but I can be available starting at three o'clock every day, so.
Cool.
Let me know.
I don't have any skill playing pickleball, but I know that there's a paddle and there's a ball, and I can, I can figure that part out.
Yeah, I could come in as early as three o'clock.
I can, I can, but I.
That works. That works. So I just wanted you guys to have an update, because I know it's been a little bit since we've talked about it, but it is, it is happening. Yeah.
I have a question. Is the court, the, the, are they gonna make a permanent court right out here?
We are. Um, we're using the, they had to wrap up using all the ARPA funds, um, and so one of the things was to put a permanent court out there. Um, initially, the talks were to asphalt the whole courtyard, because it needs to be out, asphalted, regardless of the court or not, it just needs to be freshened up. Um, and then I heard talks just recently today about doing cement instead, because it'll last that much longer. And the price is pretty similar. Uh, it's just a little more expensive, but in the long run, it's gonna last way longer than asphalt, and then you don't have to touch it up all the time. Um, so that's not. Set in stone at the moment, but that's, I sound, sounds like the direction we're going. Um, we will then paint the lines for the basketball court, we will paint the lines for the pickleball courts, I believe we'll do two. And then, um, I'm gonna get those hoops down and have them probably sandblasted if they're still in good condition, repainted. Put the nets up and everything so that it's a working basketball.
There's hoops out here.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a full court. Yeah, but during COVID, they took the nets down, not just the nets, but the.
The rim.
The rim and the nets down so that no one would use it.
Um.
I wasn't here, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Lights there.
So to.
Are they still light?
So there's some random lights out on the buildings in different places.
Probably not.
It.
For the court.
It lights it-ish. Um, today I had the, the maintenance team put up two of the brand new solar lights that also got, um, purchased with ARPA money. And I have solar lights for Jack O'Connell and solar lights for Paco and solar lights for here. Because I have the Fall Festival coming up on Saturday, and we potentially will be doing part of it outside, we're kind of on the fence depending on the weather and just how cold it is. Um, I had them quickly put them up on the poles of the, uh, hoops, because we just need something to put them on. So there's temporary lighting out there for the, the immediate need. But, uh, once we get the court in there properly, we need to put in taller poles with the same solar lights, but just taller, so that it. We have one on each side of the, uh, court, and it will reflect down, so if it is five o'clock on a day like today, and you want to be out there and playing, you could. Um, because it could start so early, so. So yeah, forward progress. We're getting there.
People move it. Item number ten, movie nights.
Movie night, so this month we have our winter movie night, and that is on the thirteenth of December. Which, holy moly, it's only ten days away. Um, so I will be having people vote, uh, at the beginning of next week for what movie they want to watch. I'm assuming it's gonna be holiday related, just because everyone's in the mood. Um, six P M. like usual at Leroy Park, like usual inside our concession stand this, uh, time around is, uh, a sweet affair. She, she hasn't been around for quite a while, because, uh, she was doing Friday night, Friday night, street nights or something like that in Sanria. Um, so we have her back around because it's the holidays. She will have some savory options as well as her normal baked goods. And then, uh, I'm taking the popcorn machine over. Last month I didn't take it over, even though we had it, because, uh, we had the Huskies over there, and I didn't want to take away from their sales. Um, so I have the popcorn, and I'm also gonna make sure everyone has hot chocolate, because it's winter time. And Christmasy, so.
He just sent her a, out of term, where I'm saying that, well, I, I think that's.
Yeah, oh, because you, oh.
A bunch of peanut butter.
Okay, I'll make, I'll get you some, Joe, don't worry. I will, I can always grab him and zoom over, because, uh, Angie, my building attendant, does the movie nights with me, so. I will get my hands on some peanut butter for you.
She did all the baked goods for the Cheer Expo, and they were amazing.
Her stuff is delicious. I try to, I try to stay away from her table when she comes. It's like, I could eat it all. So, that's exciting, it'll be fun. I'm hoping we get, you know, a movie like, on another gr- So that's exciting, it'll be fun. I'm hoping we get, you know, a movie like on another Grinch or Alfred's, you know, something. Holiday like that, just because it'll be fun. So.
What was the movie I last month?
Yeah, I voted and I was like, I think Coco won by a Liam.
So Coco, so last month was kind of weird. We got a very low attendance. By very low, I mean it was like. Like eight people or ten people, um. Two things going on. First of all, was the fight.
Oh, the Mike Tyson?
Yeah, oh, Mike Tyson fight, so that did not help my cause. And the month before that, it was. The month before that, it was the World Series, so like I've just had two kind of terrible nights and uh movie months in a row. But our movie didn't end until right when the fight was gonna start, so I was like. Yeah, you know, let's say we're having a pre-party, I'm like, you could have made it, but anyways. Um, then we had the second problem that at, at the school, that same day they played Coco.
Oh, my god.
All the kids just saw Coco during the day, so they're not gonna come see Coco at night. So I was like, wow, that, that did not work out. So it was just one of those, like you're sitting there just scratching your head going. Like, how do I avoid this? But, you know, you don't know, when I planned the, the movie nights, I planned three months at a time. Four months before, so I don't know that Mike Tyson's gonna have his fight and I don't know that the Los Angeles Dodgers are gonna go to the World Series and. I don't know the school district is gonna play Coco the same day. You know, you just do your best, but the, the people that we did have there had a great time. And uh Lobo was our concession and they're such a great sport, even when we only have ten people there. They're there the whole time regardless, so that was really nice, so. Yeah, my thing is we do what we do for whoever comes and if it's one person or if it's a hundred people. You, you know, we give it our all, just like we would if the room was full, so. I want everyone to enjoy it and if those ten people came out and that was a fun Friday night for them, that's all that matters. So, but I'm hoping this winter one will be more exciting. Hopefully we don't have any big things happening. On that date.
I'm great. Item number eleven, poetry gym, Jim.
So Mr. Arnuto is not here, but I can tell you that, let me find the little flyer he sent me. Or maybe not. Uh, poetry gym is in January. Um, there it is. It's the thirty-first of January, uh, six thirty to eight as usual at the vets hall, um. And last month he used the popcorn machine, which was quite the hit. Um, I let him borrow it and take it over there. And everyone really loved the popcorn. I think he said he had roughly about twenty people show up, so. Yeah, that's good, so we'll just keep on, keep the pattern of every other month. Uh, because now he's doing it as a hundred percent volunteer um in collaboration with direct department, so.
What time?
It's from six thirty to eight on January thirty-first. At the vet's hall. And I'll make sure you guys get those flyers uh for our next meeting at the beginning.
Sounds good, thank you. Item number twelve, art class series.
Yeah, so uh, this Saturday is a busy Saturday for the rec department. We have our final. Art class of this series. Uh, I'm looking at budgets and things to see if we continue this into next year, maybe do another four months. I was gonna chat with you guys and see, you know, what you think. Uh, but on Saturday, we're having the snow globe class. Um, once again, registration is completely full. Uh, for the, for the four art classes that we've had, I believe we've had two completely full classes. Going into it and two that were almost full. I think we were shy of, you know, four or five people. Um, and then extra siblings showed up or, you know, sometimes I would let a parent do it with a younger child or something like that, just. To make sure we use all the materials since they are, we prepaid for all those classes. Um, but we have had really good attendance and really good feedback and people seem to really enjoy it. Um, so Saturdays is going to be from ten to twelve. In the auditorium and you're making snow globes from scratch. So, um, I don't know if you guys have heard good things about it and feel like maybe we should do another four months or another three months. Going into next year, especially with like the rain and stuff, I feel like. Having some indoor options is kind of beneficial, uh, but. It is pay, you know, it is something I pay and averages. About three to four hundred dollars per class because it is twenty-four people. All the supplies are included, there's three instructors. They set up, they break down, like, you know, they do the whole thing, uh, start to finish and they help market. Um, so I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I think it's a great option and especially during the winter months, it's craft stuff. Does get kind of expensive and, you know, so it's a nice option for. Kids, you know, or if a parent can't make that investment, or I wouldn't even know how to start to make a snow globe before we totally off.
I would definitely be YouTubeing it. I think they're probably plastic. I'm gonna guess that because of the kid's class, they're probably plastic. But I think you have to put like a certain mixture of solution in it to make it do what it does. I don't think it's straight water, so again, like Emily said, I. I would have to YouTube it to even figure out how to start something like that, so I love that we have that option where it's. You come as the parent and it's all there and the supplies are all there and someone's telling your kid how to do it and. You know, if you want to go home and maybe tie dye now or you want to, you know, design a skateboard on your own now or make more snow globes. So now you have that under your belts as an adult and as a child, um, so they're kind of cool skills and activities that I feel like. You know, they can use that knowledge moving forward to continue to do that in the coming months, uh, or the coming years if they want, but. If you guys are down for it, I can try to set up another three or four month section for, starting in January.
Do we have to say or do we need a motion?
I'm just asking for your feedback.
Now, this is part of the budget right now.
Yeah, so I do have it within the budget. I was waiting because uh Janice, our uh. Finance director gave me the budget on Mon- yesterday. Seems like a really long week already, yesterday. Yesterday, um, so I looked at it and we should be able to continue with. Uh, the same, the same budgeting technique that I've used this whole time, which is roughly about, I. I give myself a thousand dollars a month. I never. I very rarely have hit the thousand dollars, like the color run definitely hit it and those really, really big months hit it. But normally we stay well below it and so that allows me to go, okay, we can do art classes. That's three fifty for the art classes. Fall festival, that was five hundred. You know, you sit and kind of play with it and I try to, you know, have maybe like one or two paid events and then everything else is volunteers and free. Um, so it's, you know, fine line going back and forth.
Raffle items, part of the budget can either, it disallow a cost, you know? I'm just thinking for like movie night when you said we're in that, I mean, attended. You raffle off a bike saying like.
You know, to check with uh guests Denise and Todd. I, I'm not sure, I know Hannah never mentioned doing anything like that, uh. But I have done it a lot in my past positions and it is always helpful and it always brings extra smiles and um interest. Um, so let me see if that's something we're allowed to spend the budget on. Uh, because I'm not sure if there's any rules because we're a city, that can be done or can't be done or.
Well, the reason I asked is partly because. I plan to make a small donation to the city uh nonprofit, right? And earmark it for. Parks and Rec. So that you could, if you can't do it, then you can use that.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, let me, um, I will put that on my list.
Favor of continuing as long as we're getting a strong um attendance, I think that. You know, if people are kind of voting with their interests, keep it going as long as we have interest from the community.
I have two, the two months that sold out, like, you know, right off the bat. Um, I then had people going, well, can I, can I register? It's not, it's not working. I can't register and I'm like, you can't register because it tells you it's closed, it's full. Um, so I've had two months where we've been overflowing with interest. Uh, it kind of depends on the activity. The skateboarding, I was super excited about and we were like. Two people or three people shy of Philly now and I was like, wow. Surprised me, but then um, the tie dye was full plus, people wanted to do it. Uh, snow globe has been. Is that, I got like nineteen signups within less than forty-eight hours.
Wow.
It was, like the moment I put it out, it was like boom. Like all night long, my phone was ding, two in the morning it was ding and I was like, man, these moms are excited. Yeah, it was, I literally had left the art class, so what I do is when I leave an art class, I hand out the flyer for the next art class because I. Obviously, we have an audience of people that like it and then I post it. So everything, everything happens right that night, right after the art class that's current. And so I put it all out and the whole way home to Napa was like ding 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 ding. I got there, I had already had nine by the time I got from here to. To Napa. I was like, okay, that was only a fifteen minute drive. And then all night long, they just kept on coming in and by the next morning, the class was almost full and we've had. The last few stragglers come in, um, and then I had people texting me today asking if they could go and I was like, sorry, no. Because we do pay for twenty-four spots, she brings twenty-four sets of material, so. I just can't go over because I budget out that I can handle three fif- you know, three to four hundred dollars for that class, so. Um, and then if we ever need the activities to be. More budget friendly, we, she has, you know, she can basically say like, these are more expensive activities, these are medium, these are less expensive, so. I have the option of playing with what we do, um, so that it works with the budget, but. I don't know, just as uh your feedback, not anything like emotion or anything, but. Um, do you guys want to do like another four, four month? That would be January, February, March, April? Or do you want to do three months? What do you think?
So we do four, but I'm just, you mean, based on attendance.
Yeah, yeah. Right, well, what I do is if I do four, she gives us that even better deal. So she gives us a good deal because we're a city, but then it, it doesn't have to be four necessarily, but I said, you know, let's just do four just to kind of. Plan, plan it out and really get a feel for if people liked it or not, because you can't, you can't go off of one event. Um, and so she gave us a better deal because we did all four and it was locked in and so. It actually worked out better that way.
I had a lot of people taking pictures at that football volleyball, I had them spread out in there, oh.
Oh, the flyers.
It's all free.
Format, the way I post things on my bulletin in front of my office and now I can get almost two months worth of activities on the bulletin. Normally I'm like two or three events shy just because I can't fit enough. Uh, but now we're, we're having, you know, the current month plus the next month so that people can get in the rhythm of going, oh, I'm gonna plan ahead. I, I want to do that art class or I want to do this so that. Um, there isn't that feeling of like, oh, well, I didn't get a spot or I didn't have a chance, um, trying to give people plenty of time to plan if they want to.
I'm gonna tell people about that.
Yeah, and they're English on one side, Spanish on the other, you can't go wrong.
And the marketing for all the events, like you've done a really good job getting the word out because. I think that was kind of one of the, not that we were missing before, but like. Getting the word out and then holding consistent with the signups and so I think people are starting to realize like, oh, if I want to get my snow globe spot. A better register.
They're, they're, I feel like they're falling into place. I've been here nine months, nine months on the thirteenth. And I feel like people, people are now coming to the events and going. Did, did I have to register for this one? As they walk in the door and I'm like, no, you're good. And so it's like, the, the. The wheels are turning, they're, they're getting it. Some are registered, some are not. Um, I always tell them when they ask me something like that, I say, look at the bottom of the flyer. I always put registration at the bottom. If you don't see anything about registration. And normally there's a QR code, you're good, you just come, so. I feel like everyone is, is getting, getting the rhythm of what I do, so that's cool. It's, uh, I feel like we've been having really good, consistent uh attendance of all the events. Oh, the prices being great. Yeah, it's all, it's all, the only thing that we're not offering for free right now is just when it comes to like the sports leagues or the sports classes. Because that is uh in conjunction with youth evolution and they're, they're, you know, they're doing their thing and, and we're just kind of. Putting our logo on it and helping market it and, and getting a city a better price, but um, other than that, absolutely, everything's free.
Yeah, I would be in favor if the numbers, you know, just kind of like what Michael said, like if the numbers can stay consistent. I think getting us four months, that would get us through like Easter, spring break. You know, what do we want to do for summer if we want to change course, but if we can get a good deal by locking in for four months.
Well, I was thinking maybe we do four months, we let off for summer. And then we, then we go towards the end of the year and do another four months. That way, you know, during the summer, a lot of people are out. Side enjoying outside and I like to do a lot of outside stuff during the summer, um, so maybe we just do like. The, the beginning and the end of the year if, if the interest continues, like you said, so. I will shoot for another four months, get us a really good price, get us some really cool new activities, um, and you'll be seeing them soon.
Um, great. Continue. What are the activities?
I love our Wednesday activities. I don't know if you guys have heard anything about them, but I really enjoy them. Um, we've been, this is our. Third month, I think we're in our third month. This is our third month of doing Wednesday activities. So I started this thing where I do two Wednesday activities a month. They start at one fifteen and go to three o'clock because the school gets out at one fifteen. So I literally have actually stood out there on the sidewalk and. Like, been telling everyone free popcorn and whatever that activity is and they. There was this one time when we got over a hundred people and they were streaming past me, like through City Hall, it was crazy. I, I, no, because I was, you know, I'm, I'm like literally pointing, I'm speaking in English and Spanish and English and Spanish the whole time for. I did that for about fifteen minutes straight, English, Spanish, English, Spanish, telling people like, go, go, and the moment I said free popcorn and. I think it was the pumpkin painting.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, was the one where we had well over a hundred people. I mean, that auditorium was slammed. I made, like, I think fifteen or sixteen batches of the biggest batch of popcorn I could make for that machine, which is uh. Like two hundred ounces or something like that. It was a lot, like it was a go, 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 uh, but it's awesome. I love seeing all the kids. We're getting lots of repeats. We're getting a lot of people coming to that event and then all of a sudden I see them show up at Zumba. I see them show up somewhere else. I'm seeing. Repetitive faces or when I see a new face, then at the next Wednesday event, I see that same face again, so it's kind of nice to start seeing that build. Um, I love seeing the kids, like on game day, uh, we had a bunch of board games out and then also basketball and dodgeball and that kind of. Stuff for the kids that need a little more hype. Um, but seeing parents sit down and play a board game with their kid. I had so many parents that didn't know how to play uh certain board games like Candyland and things like that, so I went over and explained it to them. And I mean, I heard laughter and they were like, I, I'm gonna get you and the competitiveness and between the mom and the kid. Or the dad and the kid or the mom, dad and the kids, and it was just those moments, I feel like. You know, when we're at home, we're really busy and we're just go, go, going as parents and trying to do our best and working. And it's just so great to just for that moment, see those parents be able to truly engage with their kid, do something that. Maybe even the parents never done, you know, um, due to maybe the way they were raised and just see them enjoy that and like thoroughly laugh, like.
Oh, I love the heart of Parks and Rec.
Every time we had an activity, so if we want to.
The livestream or something, yeah, so. So that was really special, that, that particular day was special, just seeing all these parents like. Playing those games and asking like, how do we play it? And then I explained it and they were playing round after round after round and so like. And then one little kid said, Mom, will you please buy it so we can play it at home?
Oh, my god, so sweet.
A nine dollar Candyland game, you know, just, it was so much fun and they enjoyed doing it with their mom that they're like. Can you buy it so we can do it at home? And, you know, you can kind of tell which families maybe do it more and which. Don't do it at all or maybe even don't have board games at home, so it's just nice to see that those things are slowly being integrated into their. Their usual or their, their, um. Their activities with their kids that maybe before weren't part of it, so.
That would be cool if we're looking for items for the raffle. That would be cool if we're looking for items for the raffle, cuz those are so cheap, but they can be really impactful.
And right now, I went to uh Where was I? The, I can't remember if it was uh, I would do that at CBS or the Dollar They now have like the mini version of all those games, all the classic games. And so like the box is smaller, you know, just more compact. Uh, but they had the Candy Land and they had all that. Maybe the board flips out more ways, you know, instead of just a half, it flips out in quarters or something, but um, they're really reasonably priced, way cheaper, probably half the price of the normal sized one. And I just thought, you know, those are the kinds of things that if you can get the parents involved, it's just such a special moment, even if it's five minutes playing Candy Land.
Yeah, that's great.
You know, said uh tomorrow, we have ornament making. Uh, so it will be starting at one fifteen. We have wooden holiday ornaments. Um, and we will be providing paint and glitter glue and stuff that they can decorate their ornaments with, and then they can take those home. Uh, I do popcorn at every single one of these Wednesday events and those kids are hungry. Really, really hungry. So we eat a lot of popcorn. Um, and then next Wednesday, also at one fifteen to three o'clock, we have gift bag making. So because it's the holiday season and I know uh with my kids, they would always want to gift something that they made at school, like some little project. But then they would have to ask their parents for wrapping paper and then they're like relying on them. And I thought, well, wouldn't that be cool if we just have white nice white gift bags and then provide them with stencils and paint and markers and let them design a gift bag or two take it home. And then if they do make something cool at school and they wanna gift it to a family member or a friend, they have a gift bag to put it in. Um, so it's a craft, but it, it also kind of you, can be utilized in this season. So um, I think that'll be really fun. We have two different size gift bags. And I think depending on how many people show up, we should allow, we should be able to allow them to make at least two, uh, smaller one and a bigger one. And um, if we have less than fifty people, they could probably make several. Yeah. So if you're ever in the neighborhood and you ever wanna swing by, it's really fun to just see all these kids in there. Um, just being so excited about doing something. You do this event in the middle of the day. And I think it's people like from Santa Maria or other places, they're commenting, they're like, this is the worst timing ever. And I write back and I said, thank you so much for your comment, but actually the Guadalupe kids come out at that time for school and so it's perfect. They enjoy it. You know, so it's not really an event for out side of Guadalupe. It's meant specifically for Guadalupe kids and it is open to all uh ages. For the pumpkin painting, I had um, two couples that were like in their seventies or eighties. So anybody can come and do whatever we do. It's not just for youth, but it just happens to be at a very convenient time for the kids to get out of school.
I love that, though, like a multi-gen approach, like, you know, the seniors can pull a lot from the energy of the kids and the kids can interact with.
So last week we did, or last week, I think it was last, we did a craft day. I got all the random leftover crafts from the whole time I've been here, the whole eight months. And I had like a couple of this and a couple of that and a couple leftover from an art class or, or uh, from the art festival or whatever. And I laid everything out and just let people pick whatever they wanted to do. And I had a lot of adults actually joining in and a lot of artistry. I mean, like I was like, do you sell your work? I mean, it was impressive, like some of these moms sitting there with their kid on their lap. You know, doing the mom thing and painting away. And she had a full-blown uh ocean like scape on this ca- canvas with the sun setting and it was like ombre and then she did a, uh, she did a dolphin. You got all that bottom of the piece, like, wow. And you know, it's just kinda cool to see like maybe she doesn't have a chance to do that kinda stuff because she's working a job, taking care of kids, whatever. But she sits there and as she's still being a mom, she's, you know, just enjoying that moment. So that was pretty awesome. It's, it's been a really cool experience. I've really, really, out of almost all my activities, I enjoy the Wednesday activities the most.
And the person's asking, cuz either you picks me up and it's like two thirty or three o'clock when he gets over here. Don't worry about it.
I'll, I'll pick you up if you wanna come join us on Wednesdays or a Wednesday.
Sounds good.
Yeah, fun.
Fall Festival.
Fall Festival, that's also this Saturday, right after the snow globe-ish. Starts at four thirty and to eight thirty. Uh, it is a collaboration in between Taylor Farms and the rec department. Um, I spoke about it last month, but we're doing the foosball tournament and salsa making contest. We have twelve people entered into the contest. They're bringing their salsas. Ev- everyone that attends gets to try the salsa and vote on the salsa. So it's uh, it's voted by the participants, not a panel of judges, which I think is
Really cool.
Best, because, yeah, the people, the people are going to vote and, and and uh, we're gonna have three winners for second and third place for the salsa making contest. We then have ten um, top three winners and then seven more winners or top people will be given gifts as well. Uh, for the foosball. And they're giving them a gift card. I think it's like Target or something like that. They get a gift card, they get a Taylor Farms bag, they get a tar- Taylor Farms jacket, which is similar to mine. It's like a, a nice
Oh, nice.
A nice jacket. They also get a, like a journal that's Taylor Farms, you know, some of their swag. Um, so that's really cool. And they get a trophy. Uh, so that's really cool.
And breaking rights for having the superior salsa of Guadalupe.
Open to businesses too. And I actually sent out the flyers to individual businesses because I was like, oh, for sure, we're gonna have Tapatio with their delicious salsa and stuff like that. At least on the paper, no one said that they were from a business. So it sounds like they're kind of home cooks, so that's exciting. So uh, we're gonna have that. We also are having, um Yeah. So you're gonna walk in, you're gonna try all the salsas and you're gonna vote right away before I lose you. Then after that, uh, you can go to a table next to that. Taylor Farms is providing snack packs. Uh, they're like vegetables and like ranch or peanut butter. Or I don't know, these little snack pack things, free for everyone. We're gonna have popcorn free for everyone. And we're gonna have uh water for everyone to also consume. So you have three food op snacky options to eat if you're just hanging out and don't wanna purchase anything. If you do, Lobo's gonna be there in the kitchen with the half door and he will be selling uh sandwiches that are barbecued on site and tacos as well. Um Yep. And then originally originally, we were gonna do all of the games outside. And I think today we decided with the weather being like in the forties by the time like five o'clock hit, six o'clock hits. Uh, that we're probably gonna do it all in the auditorium. Um, and even though that sounds like it's gonna be tight, it's not. Because there's, there's quite a lot of space. Uh, so we're gonna have salsa making, uh, salsa contest. That ends and right when that ends, the tournament starts. The tournament will be set up in the midport. And then um, we're actually gonna put a bouncer inside of the auditorium on the floor. And then up on stage, I'm gonna lay out all the different games. So we have a giant yard-sized tic-tac-toe that I purchased. We have a giant connect four, like the really big connect four that's for yards. Um, we have the cornhole. We have golf putting that they're bringing from their stuff. Um we brought, oh, I, I was able to buy this like giant uh snakes and ladders game that's on the ground, which is like the board game, but on the ground and it's like giant. I don't know, we're, we're just gonna have fun with it. I also have bubbles. Bubbles need to be outside, so if anybody really wants to do bubbles, we're gonna do outside. Cuz bubbles are a hit.
Yeah.
So bubbles are a hit. So starting, I'll probably shut down the bubbles as soon as it gets dark, but they'll have a good hour to do bubbles outside uh, right in the courtyard. And last but not least, we're having a piñata. Uh, really cool piñata. I don't want anybody getting hurt, so I bought the kinda piñata where you put all the candy in it and then you wrap it with ribbon. So it's like giant and you wrap the outside of this wooden structure with ribbon and then you fill the inside with candy. So then you tie it and when the kids are ready, you pull the ribbon, which spins the piñata and like all the candy flies out. So it's the alternative to having someone hit it. Because I didn't want anybody swinging and hitting something or someone. I mean, I always try, I always try to think about those things. So I think it's gonna be a great time. I mean, you're gonna have candy and popcorn and veggies and salsa and chips and um, lots of winners. So I'm excited. I hope a lot of people come out. Um
Do you need any setup help or anything?
Um, so right now, Taylor Farms is dropping everything that they have off on Friday night up on the stage, so that's ready to go. And then on Friday, there, I know at least two other people are coming over, but I think setup is gonna be relatively simple for this one. Um, I think it's just kind of manning the areas during the event, you know, I kind of need to stay with the contest until that's over, just to make sure that goes smoothly because it's a contest. And then after that, it's just kind of everyone, everyone can do whatever it is that they wanna do because there's gonna be so many activities that you can just go around to it. It's all just you know, at, at your will. So I think we're good, but I appreciate that.
Well, if you decide you need any help, I will be there for Snow Globe and I plan to come back for Fall Fest.
Awesome. Everyone, tell your friends.
Question on the platform. Free on these or they are free, right?
They are free. Um I, I, I need to get back to making sure I put on every flyer. Um Yeah, they're really good, but because everyone knows that now Guadalupe does everything for free. And I'll be honest, I hate putting the free thing on my flyers. Yeah, and when you, and when you register on them uh for the, the tournament and stuff, it tells you right at the top, it's free and all that. But uh, yeah, I will do better not missing that free. I just like, I make this beautiful flyer and then I have to find somewhere to slap that free sticker and it doesn't always look so great. No one comes up to me anymore and goes, do you, do I need to pay for this? Like, they all know, everyone's well-trained at this point, so.
Well, I guess at this point, if it's not free, then you would say.
Yeah, 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 yeah. At the beginning, I was really hitting it hard because I will try to get people to, to come. And now we're, we're having such a good consistency of attendance across all our events. I mean, I think Joe sees it too, that it's almost like you don't have to beg so much.
Yeah.
You know, by being like, it's free and free popcorn and you know, it still helps, right? Because you want the attendance numbers to keep going up. But it, I don't feel like I'm begging uh anymore. You know, now I'm just trying to stabilize it and, and, and slowly grow it, but I'm not begging, so.
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, how many people registered for the foosball tournament?
Uh, thirty.
Wow. And then, um
And drop-ins will be accepted, even though we were trying to stay away from that. If you walk in and you're like, I wanna play foosball, we will make it happen for you. The contest, no, for the salsa, but the foosball, we will do drop-ins.
And then, um, are we gonna put this on the marquee?
It is going on the marquee tomorrow morning. Um, it's been a busy days of this week.
No, I hear ya.
I feel like it's been five days already just this week, uh, but it's only Tuesday. Um, maintenance, I asked them to put it up tomorrow. Um, and it went out on the parent square app. And I blasted out social media again today, um, and all the little Guadalupe neighbor pages and all those things. So I'm just gonna push really hard. If you guys can snap a picture and share it, or you wanna go on my social media and just share it to your page. Um, I know that we, they asked uh everyone at the factory um today, which obviously is a basis of who's gonna come because it's from Taylor Farms. And over a hundred people said they were gonna come just from the factory alone. Um, so we definitely for sure have a hundred people coming. I'm, I, no sweat about that, but I'd love to see the community come as well as you know, like us pull our weight as well as Taylor Farms bringing their people in, so.
I imagine a lot of those might be from Santa Maria, which is fine.
Good, like a good ratio of kind of Guadalupe and Panamaria. So, yeah.
It's open, gonna be great.
Yeah, can't wait.
I don't remember fifteen.
So Christmas decorating contest, I just put it on there to reiterate that we are having it and we have not gone anybody to sign up. Uh, right before we started this meeting, we talked about the possibility of maybe, um maybe Joe and I go out and we leave flyers on people's doors that have really nice decorations and lights up uh, just to kinda motivate. Um, so I'm gonna double check tomorrow with Todd and the attorney and just make sure that that's not a problem.
You won't be arrested, you need bail money.
I would say I don't know what I don't know until I know it, so I'd rather ask. Um, but anyways, I think that'd be cool because I've seen a lot of cool lights and I've seen a lot of decorations and I'm like
I had a flyer right now.
Yeah, I was like, where are my applications? So um, I definitely want us to be able to go and judge and see the lights. And I want the committee to be able to go and see the lights because we'll map it for them so that they know where to go and to see the lights. Um, and if you do apply, you do have to have your lights on, I think from sundown to nine o'clock or something like that, uh, so that people if you're on the map, people can go and actually see your lights. Uh, so that is a requirement. Um, but you only have to do, I think for, like, from the thirteenth to the twenty-fourth. So it's like, it's like eleven day span of having to have your light on.
Have your lights on during the year.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, uh, if you hear of anybody or you see anybody with really awesome lights, um I will put the flyer in the group chat that we have, just so that you could quickly send them the flyers via text if you want. And obviously, it's on our social media, it's on the website. And they can come to my office and get part applications if they don't wanna print it or they don't wanna do whatever. Um any, any avenue possible, I can make it happen.
Just leave application already and tell them, well, we already printed all, but we'll send them out.
Yeah, I have them printed sitting in my office for anybody that walks in, but um, I'm just itching to drop them off at houses.
I wonder if in future years, you know how like registering for the art classes is so easy cuz it's that form program? I wonder if we ever convert to an online where people don't have to fill out a paper, they could just do it online.
So I was thinking about doing that this year. Um, but I kinda wanted to test out. I mean, Hannah had it this way, so I was just, I didn't know if there was, you know, sometimes there's particular reasons why it's done in a certain format.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it What?
Get off the boat.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I left it that way for now. Um, but, yeah.
I know last year, we had a lot of the same people as the first year, so I wonder if there's like a very small group of people that wanna compete.
Right.
But maybe we adjust it in future years, like instead of a competition, it's like we drive around the city and like, you know, just put a little note on there, like you've been, you know, spotted as a Christmas elf or something. Candy cane and recognition for their efforts.
I know in Aurora Grande, one year, uh, when I lived there, I entered one of their decorating contests and you you like can nominate people.
Oh, that's cool.
So instead of me applying my house, like my neighbor could be like, Anise has really cool lights at this address. And so it was kind of a backwards kind of nominate, yeah, like you nominate instead of applying. But I think it's really cool just for, you know, if we all have applications and you just happen to be driving by and you have an extra second to just pull over and stick it in their mailbox or under their mat. I mean, maybe it would get more people doing it so that then next year you know, again, everyone starts catching on to the things we're doing. So maybe if we're doing it with anybody we see with lights, it will then bring more people, the awareness of, oh, the city does this, maybe they don't even know.
Hand-selected to apply for my light.
Exactly.
My one polar bear out for probably. Energy efficient.
Hey, they're worried, they're worried about the earth, so that's good. Alrighty, thank you, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible for any of the commissioner to get any um recreation gear? Apparel with the recreation emblem on it? I'm saying something that we are the recreation commission or something. We are the recreation commission or something.
Um. I don't see why not, but I'll double check just like I'm doing with the raffle stuff, um, like a jacket or a. Bolo shirt or a hat or a. What are you thinking?
The better buy maybe, or whatever you think. But if you had it in time for the parade, that'd be cool. I don't know if that would happen.
Try to see what I can do, yeah. So mine, mine is like this with a regular emblem, um, but. I could do something where you guys have the emblem and then it says recreation.
Commissioner?
Commissioner, yeah.
Yeah, that would be really.
Um, but would you guy, what would you guys wear? Would you guys all wear a sweater? I know our new folk will wear a sweater, no problem. I, I see Enrique in sweaters all the time. You're wearing a sweater. Would you wear a sweater or no? Not really.
Do we have a budget for jacket or do you think that's like way too outside?
Um, these jackets are only like thirty bucks.
How much?
Uh, thirty, I buy them on Amazon and then I get them embroidered. Thirty plus embroidery, so it's like fifty bucks, which I guess sounds kind of expensive, but I mean, I've had this nine months and I'm just barely starting to wear outfits at all. And I wear almost five days a week, so.
I'd like a jacket if we had it in the budget.
Okay.
Or at least or something. I mean, I wear these, I got this for, for Bulldogs, but.
Where did you get it embroidered? Uh, in San Amoría at, um. In Panamaria, All-American.
Remember where you come?
Yeah, so it was uh fifty, about fifty dollars. Yeah, because it was like thirty bucks for the jacket on Amazon. I bought it, made sure it fit me because you can embroider it. You've gotta make sure it fits. I like, you know, if it's a.
And then we could get a new group picture and I matching jacket.
So like I, I took it home, washed it, made sure it didn't shrink everything. Once I was a hundred percent satisfied, then I went and got it embroidered because once it's embroidered. There's no going back. Um, but if you guys want like a sweatshirt or something, we don't have to embroider it, it can be, uh.
Green print.
Uh, printed on it. Uh, it just depends on what. You'll use the most or what you, you know, you don't want it to sit in your closet, so. Sweatshirt jacket.
Compared this weather, we've got a lot of colds.
Yeah, we do have a lot of cold. Alright, um, I can look into that. I can't promise the parade because that's eleven days away. But. I have it on my list, um.
I have a Santa Papa. I had out there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check and see about that, um. Let's see, three, six, nine, twelve, it's like a hundred fifty bucks. For the hundred fifty bucks, if we went the jacket mode plus the embroidery. So that's two fifty, about two fifty, if we do the jacket, it'd be cheaper if we do the sweater, so. Let me just see if that's something that I can, again, spend the budget on, just like the raffle things. I don't know if there's any fine lines or anything like that. Um. And. Uh, you were mentioning new picture, yeah, we need new pictures. Like a new group picture and then individual pictures, and then if you guys were wearing that, that would look nice as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the topic of the parade. Changing subjects or do you wanna go to the number sixteen before I talk?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so I have you in, in my truck, have you in my truck. Michael, I didn't hear from you.
Which state again?
Uh, the fourteenth, Saturday the fourteenth, you have to be ready to line up at five o'clock. They say five fifteen, but I want everyone there at five o'clock because I won't be tracking anybody down. Can't commit, okay. Well, leave it open because. Just because you don't tell me now doesn't mean that you can't jump in on it. I'm just trying to get a general head count because I can fit, um, I got Colorado back today. Um, I will go and take it to get detailed tomorrow because it's. Been used as a work truck, so it is brutal.
So when you say in the truck, you'll be in the back area?
No, so we have, we have a driver plus four passengers inside. Yep, uh. If you're. If we need a little extra room, there'll be three passengers. It just depends on how tight we can squeeze, uh, but we could technically have three in the back. And two people in front.
Were you pulling a float or anything?
We're not. Uh, this is kind of a last minute thing because I didn't know if I was gonna get the Colorado back in time. Next year, I would like us to put more effort into it. Um, I did get permission from the chief for anybody that wants to, to sit in the bed of the truck. Um, which is kind of nice because people can see you versus being in a truck. Yeah, so during the parade, once we get in line, you can sit in the back. At the end of the parade, you have to get out of the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, only for parade purposes that you can sit in the back, so. Um, if you're worried about being cold or you wanna be inside, you can be inside. If you wanna be in the bed, bed of the truck, you can. Um, I was thinking about maybe getting two hay bales and then covering it with like. A blanket or something just so that you have somewhere stable to sit on in the back. And we could probably have four people sitting in the back, two facing one way and two facing the other way. Um. What I put on the application was that it was, uh, rec staff and commissioners. So I invited Angie, our building attendant, and I invited Esther. Um, I was gonna be in it, but actually today I got asked to, uh, be a judge for the parade. Yeah, so, um, I will have. Angie or Esther drive it because they're staff, um, so they're cleared for that. I'm not. I don't think you guys have that kind of clearance.
I don't want that.
But anyways, uh, I just need one person that can drive the truck like. Three, two miles an hour, I don't know, you know, whatever, whatever, I don't know how fast they go, but it's not very fast.
Very slow.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll just have someone take my place because now I have to, um, judge the parade, but. Um, I will decorate the truck and have it all ready to go. So that. When you go to line up, I'll be there for you to line up and then I have to go to the judging place, but, um. Yeah, so if you change your mind or if all of a sudden you wanna go, let me know. Um, as of right now, I have one, two, three, four, five, five people. And then I could fit four more in the back. So.
I'll be there helping get the Bulldogs lined up, but I have the coaches that are gonna walk with the girls, so. Sure, they'll be thrilled that I get a ride.
And we cannot, we cannot throw candy from the vehicle, but if you do wanna hand out candy or anything like that. You can walk alongside the truck and, and hand it out that way, so just a heads up.
We did that last year, we handed out, we had little like mini football stress ball thing.
Oh, cool, yeah. Yeah.
But it's a lot of fun if you haven't been before.
I have not.
Short and it's done very quickly, but there's a lot of energy and a lot of people come out.
I'm excited. I'm gonna try to make our truck look good.
Yeah, we had Christmas song, you like to?
I have the JBL party box speakers, so yes, we will be, we will, we will have some awesome music coming from the back of that truck. Because I have two speakers, um. That Whitney helped me pick out because she already had one and they're amazing.
They're very cool.
Yeah, and they've been, we've been, we use them today for the, I let the memorial use them so that they could speak. Because you just press the button and the microphone instantly works. There's no cables, no nothing. They're amazing. Esther and I listen to music, uh, during the day on them quietly in the office, they're rechargeable, so. They're getting plenty of love.
Buddy tried to talk me into one of these, got two of them. But I just got a smaller, little JBL for.
This weekend, Amazon had them for one ninety-nine and they're normally three forty-nine.
Oh, my gosh, I'll have to look at that because we're needing to update her, um.
JBL party box.
I use mine for karaoke because you can play it through your phone and the speaker and you can like use karaoke on your phone. To a lot of karaoke parties.
Guitar or have someone that plays the guitar, it has the input for guitar.
Yeah.
Nice.
It's pretty impressive. Yeah.
So. They're cool though.
They are really cool.
What do we call it, JBL?
JBL is the brand and it's called a party box. It's the, is the model. It's about this wide, it has this nice shoulder strap, and even though you would think it's kind of heavy when you put it on your shoulder, it feels like feathers. And then it has a microphone with a little holder, so you slide the microphone in, so it's. Compact, it's fast, the phone connects to it like that, like. Uh, yeah, Amazon had it for one ninety-nine. I don't know if it's still one ninety-nine, but it was one ninety-nine this weekend.
Cyber Monday?
Well, then they tomorrow they have Giving Tuesday or something, right?
Today.
Oh, no, today's Tuesday. There you go, so they, I mean, you know how Black Friday is now, it's like the month is Black Friday. Yeah, yeah. So you, you might be able to find it, Joe.
Any more, uh. Request comments?
Well, being that this is our last meeting of the year, uh, and unfortunately I'm missing two of my commissioners, I just wanna thank you guys. For putting up with me for the last nine months and thank you for guiding me and giving me advice and kind of. You know, making, helping me learn the ways of Guadalupe and, um, I'm excited for this next new year. To just keep, keep going and keep growing and. Uh, Joe, thank you so much for all that you do with the kids and your consistency and. Like you're always out there and I'm always getting my text messages that you're leaving at eight, nine o'clock at night.
I usually forget.
No, no. It's good.
Oh.
No, no, I, I always get your texts even if it's a little late, so I appreciate that. Emily, thank you so much for all the grant work you do, it's. So much work and I could never do it and my brain could never do it. And regardless of if we get the grants or not, we're trying.
Yeah.
And you know, that's, that's a lot. Uh, Michael, thank you so much for always. Having good comments. Bringing stuff to our attention, throwing things out there, you know, making us kind of think a little different outside of the box. I really appreciate that. Uh, to Enrique who's not here, um, I just thank him for his dedication to the kids and the youth because. Regardless of if you're on the commission, you're doing something with me or not. Our goal, I feel like even though we're for everyone because we're the recreation, um, in my heart. The youth is the most important because the youth is what's going to be the next generation and they're gonna be the next generation of parents. Having new youth. And so I feel like if we can really lead the charge with them, um, then it just makes every generation better and. And I want Guadalupe to have options and, um, I feel like we're doing that when it comes to sports and extracurricular. And of course, our new folk, he is my little artistic bug and creative and free-flowing and. Awesome smile and I can always bounce ideas off of him and, um, he, he volunteers to help add events and things like that with me, so. I got really lucky with my commission and my commissioners and I just really appreciate you. And additionally, I appreciate Whitney. She's our quiet, our quiet little miracle here. Um, thank you Whitney for picking up the slack on the tech. It takes a load off my shoulders. I can sit here and type my minutes and actually have a conversation and, and, and really. Think, you know, everything can sink in because I'm not focused on doing that too, so thank you for volunteering your time.
Yeah.
And coming out to do this and being our sixth commissioner.
Try to be quiet, it's really hard.
I, I love it because you, you have the, the other side of the spectrum, which is the city council. So a lot of times they don't hear what's happening on the city council part, so you know, the two can kind of co, coexist.
It's nice to see this side too, because it brings a to- totally, we, we, we don't get this in depth, so I'm glad to be here and help where I can.
Well, thank you for the energy.
Yes.
It's amazing, I. Every week it's like, wow, what you find.
When I find the time to do it. Well, the bags under my eyes sometimes get a little darker and a little deeper, so they go, oh, that's where I found the time to do it, uh. But no, I, I, I love what I do and regardless of the hurdles and the. You know, good days and bad days and. Uh, some of the stuff that gets thrown my way that I'm not quite sure is part of the recreation department, uh, you know, just. Keep rolling with it. Like I said, days like Wednesday events, sitting and seeing those parents for the first time ever playing a board game with their child. Or seeing a mom feel to just have some artistic freedom for just a, just a moment out of her day. When she probably is gonna run home, make dinner, clean the house, get up early in the morning, go to work, do all that and not have a moment to herself. Um, to me, that, that's worth it. But that's what, that's what makes all the not so fun stuff. Worth it.
I think it's really important too to just like. Mark how far we've come as like a parks interact, like I mean, I repeat it like every month, but like. A couple of years ago, we were a deflated basketball without an air pump in a closet. Not exaggerating, and to see where we're at now, like I, not to create more work, but like really. Like here's everything you accomplished in twenty twenty-four in nine months because. I see us just continuing to grow and grow and grow, and I think it's so important to recognize that you built this. From, I mean, the deflated basketball in the closet where we were at, and so don't let anyone forget how hard. You've worked to get us where we are. So.
Thank you.
Make sure they remember it.
Sometimes I'd like to tell them to remember it, but you know, that's okay.
Whip out an annual appraisal.
I do, I do, just so you all know, and if you ever wanna reference it, I have a binder that has every single event I've ever done in the nine months. And they're all categorized by month, so you can see exactly what happened every month.
Oh, that's good.
We started April, which was my first official month, uh, because March was just kind of training and stuff. Uh, we started with two events, uh, and that was including drop-in. Uh, and once I got my bearings, we grew to, um, I think four was like the, the least. In the very, very beginning, other than April, and then after that, we've gone to seven and eight and nine events per month. Uh, and that's not including drop-in. So, you know, dropping is kind of one of those things where I just feel like it's a consistent thing. I don't really count it as a per se event. Yeah, I mean, not that it's not important, but it's, it, it does, it does the same thing every month and everyone comes and it's a rhythm. Um, and that was really set in stone before I even got here, um, but I count the events. Because I'm like, that's on me. You know, Joe, Joe the expert, he's got the drop-in, but what am I bringing to the table? So it's nice to flip through that binder sometimes myself. And just kind of see like it's getting thicker and thicker and months are getting thicker and thicker and, um, at the top of every event, I put. The attendance number because I wanna see. If we're growing and how we're growing and what months and what things, like the Mike Tyson fight. Mess things up and I make little notes. Because you know, we're gonna reference that next year and go like, okay, do we want, do we wanna do another art class? It wasn't that great last January or it was, or you know, whatever, so. We, we just have to figure out what works for our community and what our people want and what our citizens want and especially what our youth want, and so. That's, that's how I'm gonna keep on pushing forward is what, what do they want and how can I fulfill those needs? Um, and of course with the guidance of you and other, other people in the community.
So you write Mike Tyson a letter.
I think it's fighting days are behind.
Yeah, they lost the last one.
When I walked away, I was like, maybe should have a sporting events night. Wouldn't that be fun if we like. If we played a football game like live? Wouldn't it be kind of fun or like, or you know, a whatever, baseball or whatever? Yeah, or maybe we have a Super Bowl party or something like that. Like I thought maybe it would be fun, then my numbers aren't gonna decline because they're at home watching. Instead, they're at our Super Bowl party.
Maybe free food.
Yeah, um, but in the, I, I mean, outside the art tournament, I can serve liquor. Uh.
Should be sponsored event.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I can find out more details about that, but I might be able to if I have a vendor come in that is. A hundred percent deal with alcohol. When I was at the rodeo office, that's what I did. I always had Cool Hand Lutes come and serve alcohol for me. And we would get a certain cut from it, but they, they had the liquor license, they, they provided the liquor, they had the bartenders. They did everything and they had all the licensing for it. And they had their liability, we had our event liability insurance, but they had their specific insurance and so. You know, those are all things that I'm willing to ask and I'm willing to find out and you know, sometimes you'll get shot down for something, but maybe you won't. Maybe no one.
Anywhere in town that shows sporting events in the evenings because all the restaurants are closed.
Yeah.
So.
But I mean, maybe we do just start with the Super Bowl or something like that, just to kind of have a, a big. A big something, um, yeah, and then kind of see, see what else we could do. But I just think it would be kind of cool because I'm like, why have low attendance numbers when I could provide that? You know? Yeah, yeah, so, and you never know, I mean, maybe no one's ever asked if we could have an outside vendor come and sell alcohol. You know, maybe it's just never been thought of or, you know, maybe we can do it, but no one's just done it, so. You know?
Yeah.
Worth, worth asking.
I'm thinking if it's been done back in the day or something like that.
If it's what?
If it's been done.
Oh. Well, I mean, when I rent it, people can get an ABC license and they can have their own alcohol, but I wouldn't do that. I would have a vendor come in and. Be completely licensed and do it on their own, just like when I get low. Be completely licensed and do it on their own, just like when I get Lobo to come in and sell tacos, like. The whole thing is, it's just to have it provided at my event, but it's, we're not taking in any money from it, and we also aren't dealing with. Any of the process, so.
Cool, and they have a big thing, they have a bartender there, anything, we could do that too.
So I can ask about that. Anyways, thank you, happy Chris, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, because sometimes I don't see all of you.
Maybe we should do a social.
Is the city doing a holiday party this year?
No.
That's our subject?
It was gonna happen, and then it's not gonna happen. No. It's gonna be a dim Christmas.
We do it and they hear about it.
Well, the finance department, they do, because they're like a seven, like a six or seven team departments. Probably one of our biggest departments, other than maybe public works, but they're kinda all spread out. Um, they do their own little potlucks for birthdays and stuff in, in their department, but it's only their department. Um, and so I was, I had the hopes that maybe we would start doing other things, and. The initial idea for the Christmas party wasn't even gonna be paid for by the city, so there's no, there was no reason that it couldn't happen. Um, it was, we were gonna have a vendor come in and they were gonna give us a set price, which I think was like fifteen dollars. And that would be your, your dinner and your drink, and so then you could attend, and we would have like a white elephant, you know, do some of that fun stuff, but. It would be no cost to the city, um, but I guess it got shut down.
Oh, so, well, maybe twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. But if you come in the rec department, my, or Esther and I are like ninety percent done with our Christmas decorations, so. We're cheering bright in our office. Yes, I have to finish grabbing the rest of the stuff tomorrow, I brought stuff from home to Christmas it up. Anyways.
Very cool. I would like to thank everybody for what they're doing, and if anybody would like to make a motion for German at this time. I would, uh. We have a motion for a German, and two, they're all a little favor of what, what uh German at this time, sorry. I think we thank you for entering, for letting it come in your house, recreation all the time.